Hearing none, you'll declare the agenda approved. And are there any announcements from members of council for anything that's upcoming?
You can always channel me.
Always.
Actually, this area, March 14th, the Friends of the Desperey Museum have their AGM. And all are welcome. And on the 14th as well, recreational aviation in Atlantic Canada. And this will induce participants in a world of recreational aviation, including ultra-flying and hand gliding through photographs and videos hosted by ultralight instructor and hand glider pilot Christopher Bell. Admissions free, donations appreciated. In the following week, on March 21st at 2:00 PM at the museum, Hank Milton will be there and he'll be talking about the French in Lunenburg County in Nova Scotia. And he'll be doing narration discussion in some song there again. Free will, donation accepted. And that's for the next couple of weeks, Your Worship.
Great, thank you. Captain Reddell?
The Canada Day Committee has come together again to start planning for the 2020 celebrations. We've got a great start, but it's a small team and we can always use more help. So we're looking for people to sit on the planning team. And if you're not interested in sitting on the planning team, but you have some time to volunteer on July 1st, we'd be more than happy to have that help as well. Our next meeting is April 1st at 6:30 right here in the room next door at Town Hall. So we welcome everyone to join in and help out. It's a great time.
And should they reach out to you or who should they contact if they're interested in coming?
Sure, they can contact me.
Okay.
Yep, Jennifer dot McDonald at Bridgewater dot C A.
Perfect, thank you. Any other members of council with any upcoming items? All right, moving right along. I see we do have our first delegation here already. We're eight minutes ahead of schedule, but I see the Citizens for Public Transit are here. So if you're ready to go, and welcome to come down to the podium and introduce yourselves, please. And just a reminder for delegations that the timed delegations that we have, we have 10 minutes for you to present. That doesn't include questions and answers from council. So the floor is yours.
Thank you so much. Mayor Mitchell, council, staff, guests, hello and good evening. It's a wonderful day. My name is Stuart Frank and I am the Chair of the Citizens for Public Transit for Lunenburg County. And I thank you for providing the opportunity for us to meet with you and present our feasibility study on public transit report. Some of you may be aware that a draft was released last August and it's undergone a few revisions since that time and is reflected in this final report. First, I'd like to, because I have 10 minutes, so I think I can do it in five, I want to congratulate Bridgewater for being so awesome and the many successes that you folks have realized over the past months and years. And it's, as a fairly new resident to Bridgewater, I was living in north of here on the way to New Germany for quite some time. I'm really happy to be here and at least I was very, very proud to walk around our town. So, do you want me to operate that? Oh, there we go. Perfect. Now, it's going to take five and a half minutes. I think we'll be all right. Okay, there we go, on slide number two. While, in this brief presentation, we would like to tell you a little bit about ourselves, what we've been doing, and present you a final copy of the market survey feasibility study report. And that was completed in the last year. We have a request for your council, but we'll not be asking for any money, nor will be asking for a commitment to any transportation system or model at this time. We are Citizens for Public Transit. We've been at this for a long time. We're volunteers promoting the notion of public transit system for Lunenburg County. We've been around since as far back as 1992. And CPT was registered with Registry of Joint Stock because of an nonprofit group in 1996. And we thank your council, previous councils and your staff for all the support over the years. CPT board members, and also ones that are here to stand, we represent our entire region as far as all the towns and municipal and rural areas. Sorry, clicked on the draw. There we go. What do we do? And who are we? We believe that public transit is the very next thing to a human right. And we believe that we all win whenever a person takes a bus. We've heard wonderful stories of people that are writing on Bridgewater Transit and how it affects their lives. And we all pay to get people around. Whether we have public transit or not, it costs us a lot of money to move people according to their needs. We believe also in the environmental, economic, social, health and equity benefits of public transportation. And we believe it's a vital, important, essential service to our residents. We take a small bit of credit for influencing the creation of the Joint Transportation Committee and also the start of Bridgewater Transit. As you may remember, we were promoting a three-year trial throughout the whole region for many years. We just couldn't get everybody to the table at the same time and finally Bridgewater stepped up. Congratulations for doing that and operating a successful transit system. We also were instrumental in the initiation of maritime bus service in the area. You will know we've been active because we have been also getting signed petitions over the years. You have about 1,500 petitions somewhere in your archives on file from people that we had signed petitions at the green celebrations and whatnot. So there is lots of backing to what we do. A couple of words about the feasibility study. We want to thank, first of all, the Department of Communities, Culture and Heritage for providing a $30,000 grant to fund this study. We also wish to recognize a dear friend of ours, the passing of our CPT champion Norm Hasslett. The very day the final draft was released, Norm passed unfortunately. But he was so proud to know that we're here today and that important steps are being taken and considered to complete the assignment that we've undertaken. This report is only a conversation starter. There's a lot of stuff in it. There's a lot of things to take in, a lot to absorb, a lot to consider, but it requires local flavor and perspective, and that's why we're here, folks, is to present the report and then move forward on it. There is not a whole funded research consultants report that we can work with. Much of the work has been done insofar as research and consultation, possible routes and corridors, there are funding options, including the Public Transit Infrastructure There are benefits, as you all hopefully will realize, to public transportation and public transit. Environmental is a huge issue for all of us. Economic, societal, and specifically, I'm not going to read the whole list, you hopefully will have this with you, but for the town of Bridgewater, convenient increased access to recreation, entertainment, shopping areas, bringing people into the town. Alternative growth possibilities in immediate areas that fosters increased likelihood of increased business in Bridgewater area. Decreases growth strain, establishes focal centers and hospitals, administration and services. The main street of the South Shore also becomes a most attractive transit hub, aligned with demonstrated support from other local councils. There's a quote on the next slide which I'm not going to read to you, but it sums up the need for public transit. People need affordable, accessible and available transportation. I'm going to talk to you a little bit about our goals and our vision for a regional transit service. To connect Lunenburg, Mahone Bay, Bridgewater and significant populations of Modal and expand over time service to additional rural communities as the needs are identified. Effective, efficient service to meet community needs and provide access for residents to services. Focus on the positive outcomes. There's always be naiveteers. We need to focus on the positive. Shoppers, for example, are reciprocal. They come into town and they may go elsewhere as well, but the draw is to bring people into the town. Reflect the new realities and complement other transportation options, not compete or replace, but complement what is already there. Next steps, our partnership building. That's why we're meeting with mayors and councils and staff and engaging the staff to study the report and to come back with recommendations. Establish some sort of an operation mechanism, whether it's a transportation authority or whatever you may call it, and then to start a pilot and then to ongoing monitoring and examination of that, to see how it works. So we have asked, a request, that the council allow time and resources necessary for your planning administrative staff to review the CPT feasibility study on public transit. The task would be to dissect and study the report, identify a transit system model to address residents' needs, investigate potential partnership opportunities, funding options, develop a proposed governance and operations model, and prepare and report to council or committee as applicable. And we will be glad to assist in any way we can. This is to meet residents' and business needs. I want to thank you for getting on the bus. Timeline or what? I promised five minutes, it took 10. But I'd certainly entertain any questions and I hope that you will consider our request.
Any more questions from members of council?
Stuart, are you making a similar request of staff time to the other municipal units? I assume so, but yes?
Yes, we are. This is our fourth of our dog and pony show. We've met with the other municipalities and towns to date.
So why do you need each unit to do that research and study and so on and so forth versus one unit doing it all?
We don't feel that there's any gain to be operating and working in a silo. We think there's a need also for people to work together.
Yeah.
Our residents are asking for collaboration. That's come up recently with the Project Lunenburg study in the report. The citizens are asking for collaboration. They want people to be working together. So we think this is a great opportunity for the staff of the four jurisdictions we mentioned, Bridgewater, Lunenburg, Mahone Bay and Modal, to not only study the report, but maybe collaborate and look at how they could share things and work together on it and come back to their respective councils with appropriate recommendations. Or it may go to committees in some jurisdictions.
Okay, so just so I'm clear, I guess, the concept then is each of those departments have nominated a couple of people to get together and talk about it and review it and so on, as one unit, so to speak?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Maybe at first individually, separately, and then hopefully get together. I think it behooves us all to work together on this.
Sure. Okay.
I mean, it could be municipal joint service boards once, is that what you're going with that? They look at together? I'm curious to know and better understand how the conversation went in the other jurisdictions. And the reason I ask is, obviously, we support public transit. And we look at it through the lens of, yes, it costs money, but it's not, it doesn't lose money, right? Any more than, you know, doctors cost money, but you would never say that doctors lose money in the province, right? Or hospitals lose money. They cost money because they offer a service. But I always found that that conversation was not what took place in some of our neighboring municipalities. It was always, we would agree to this, if you can ensure us that it will not lose money or it will not cost us, it won't cost taxpayers money. Has that conversation changed? Is there a recognition now that public transit is a public service, like recreation and healthcare?
I do believe, and we asked our consultants to study the climate and the appetite for public transit. And I sense it's changing and that we are, is much more positively received. In Lunenburg Town Council, they've passed a motion to this effect. Modal has passed a motion to this effect. And all great discussion, especially at the Modal table where we had some opposition in the past. And it's a really wonderful discussion and looking at the opportunities, not the negatives.
That's great to hear. Other questions from members of council? Council Thorburn?
Just a couple. Do you have any idea how much time is required to look at this proposal in your mind?
It would take, I think it would take staff probably months to look at this and dissect it and come back. And especially if we're asking them to work together with other municipalities and towns, it may, you know, it could take three to six months. I don't know if that's a reasonable or accurate expectation.
But I think then it would be important that they do it jointly at the start and not at the end. Because each council will be going over the same thing four or five different times, which is going to take a lot more time than getting a committee appointed representing all councils to meet regularly and go forward as a team and bring one package that it's acceptable to everybody rather than trying to do it individually. Because you always get into different scenarios if everybody does it separately.
If I may, Mayor Mitchell, through you, I would agree with that approach. I think there are, you know, synergies there, opportunity to work together before people get too far down one tangent or another to actually share the vision.
Yeah, okay, great, thanks.
Other questions? Does she have a question?
I know. Got a comment after.
Okay. I'm just wondering if it also should be added to the mayor's, the mayor's agenda coming up. What was your?
I was just going to state that, given, I anticipate that it would take some staff resources to do this. We do have strategic priorities that we developed. They're flexible, that you can adjust your priorities, but I would suggest that if it's something of interest, that we take a look at those priorities because you can't fit it in without looking at what we're going to move to make room for it this fiscal year anyway, given the staff that would be working on this, or staff that are involved in Energize Bridgewater and those types of projects that would take some juggling around.
So Stuart, basically, do you have an anticipated timeline when you want this completed by each council or each municipality?
Yesterday too soon. We do not have a timeline per se. We'd like to have one, obviously, as soon as possible, but we realize the practicality of, you know, staff time and resources are extremely important. And we are, we'd be patient, but we'd like to see something moving forward.
And just keep going back to the municipal joint service board as being at very least at the table, but maybe their ability to provide some resources where we might be lacking and so. Other questions from members of council? This time, no hearing none? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That's great. So this will be something that comes back to our agenda as we kind of discuss. And if we have more questions and require more information, then we'll reach out to you and...
Anytime, please.
Thank you again for your presentation.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you everyone for coming. Our next delegation is Colin Gray from Mersey Tobey attic Research Institute. I'll just set up the presentation.
Yeah, we can get a team approach. Or is it, can I speak together? He's like, he's...
So while we're waiting for them, I don't know if council's aware of the latest transit numbers we have, so we now have over 75,000 riders on Bridgewater Transit. And we are delivering this service at a cost per rider of $3.66. If you recall, huge success story. So our goal in terms of riders was below that. Our target in terms of cost per rider was well above that. And we offer that, cost per rider is below the vast majority of public transit services on the continent. So that's down to staff, that's down to riders, you know, that's everyone working together. So that's a really good news story. So if our colleagues around the county are listening, public transit can be a huge success story without overburdening people if you do it right, but you have to have the conversation. All right, changing gears kind of paths here?
Changing gears completely, yeah. This is probably not something you're used to seeing. And thank you very much, Mayor Mitchell and council, for allowing me to make this very brief presentation. I think it's something that's quite important to, certainly to the province and to individual towns and municipalities in Nova Scotia. So my name is Colin Gray. I'm with the Mersey Tobey attic Research Institute, as somebody just mentioned. And our mission is to promote sustainable use of biodiversity, natural resources and biodiversity conservation through southwest, in southwest Nova Scotia and beyond through research, education and the operation of a field station. So those of you that don't know, we are in Queen's County in Kemp, North Queen's, actually, probably five minutes away from Kegy National Park. So what I want to talk about tonight is a concern that we have in the problems of Nova Scotia and it's a, it is affecting eastern hemlock. And eastern hemlock is an iconic North American species. It's one of the most long-lived species in eastern North America, a Canadian forest species that can live up to 500 years. It's some of the last remaining old growth forests in the province. Unfortunately, most of the other species in Nova Scotia have been cut over the last three, maybe four centuries. Hemlock has never been a species of any great merciful value, so that's one of the reasons that we still have some left on our landscape. And it could be a forest species on the edge, and it's because of this insect here. Hemlock blue adelgid first appeared in Nova Scotia, or first was identified in Nova Scotia in 2017 in Spring Haven, Yarmouth County. And it's likely that that had been in that area for at least four to five years, perhaps even as long as 10 years. But it was just recently discovered, as I said, in 2017. And since then, it's spread, it was first reported in Virginia in 1951, Richmond, Virginia, just outside of Richmond. And it was brought over probably in the 1940s on ornamental species from Japan. And then it subsequently spread and it was discovered in 51. And it's spread naturally by wind, birds and mammals, mostly birds. So that lovely blackberry and warbler that you see up on the top picture there, that's probably moving into Nova Scotia every spring with a hitchhiker or two. And that's the way that this has continued to spread. Also dispersal, long-distance dispersal from logs, firewood, of course, and over a period, I don't know if my pointer works or not, but the bottom photograph indicates that there's twig dieback mortality within four years and sometimes between four and 10. It's very optimistic to think it's 20 because it's very unlikely that it goes that long. And you'll see a photograph of the movement here shortly. It started, as I said, in Richmond, Virginia area, and it's moved south, north, and of course west, and even towards the coast. And it's touched into the five counties of southwest Nova. It's not in Lunenburg County, as we know, as of today, but I think, and that's because we just haven't looked enough for it, but I suspect that it moves about 15 kilometers per year, so I would be very surprised if it's not already here, it will be here shortly. That map indicates the areas in the province, the green represents the hemlock range, the red dots indicate positive sites. So that area in the southwest end of the province, you'll see a fairly concentrated area in the Digby County, Waymouth location, and then down towards Spring Haven and Yarmouth County. And it's continually moved with that hemlock range. The most easterly site now in Annapolis County is in Lawrence Town and the most easterly site is in Pond Oak Lake in Queen's County. And as I said, that's probably very close to the border between Queen's and Lunenburg County. So it's on the way. A little bit of background, they're asexual in reproduction, so they're all female, and that's the adult female on the bottom photograph. So they don't need to mate to reproduce. They have two life cycles per year. Within each cycle, they can produce up to 200 eggs. So if you do the math, there's 200 eggs per cycle, there's two cycles, almost 300 to 400 eggs per year. And that's on one individual. You see the top picture there shows one individual aphid or adelgid. They feed on the nutrients of the tree, the sugars and the nutrients of the tree, so they're not a defoliator. They're attaching that stylet that you see, the little moss piece on the bottom of that photograph, that is attached to the base of the needle. And they will draw that sap and those nutrients from that tree. So it's basically sucking the life out of the tree over a period of time. And this is the site that we first visited in Spring Haven, Yarmouth County in 2017. So that was December of 2017. That stand of hemlock, as you can see, is dead. So it's possible that it's been there for, you know, four to 10 years, but we're not quite sure. But that photograph is certainly shows you the impact that that insect can have in a very short time. So in 2017, after we've discovered this, we came together very quickly as a working group. So there's 13 organizations, different levels of government, NGOs and universities came together. So there's representation from each one of those organizations and we formed a working group. And we've collaborated with all those folks and we've taken a very collaborative approach. So part of our job with, my job with Mersey Tobey attic is to do outreach. So that's why I'm here with you folks tonight to tell you a little bit about this problem. We're also developing a website for Nova Scotia. They're surveying and monitoring, as you can see the picture up on the top right. Management plan development, there's already a Canadian management plan that's been published. And we're in the process of developing one for the province, should be out hopefully by the end of April. The civil culture trials, firewood movement restrictions through CFIA, County Food Inspection Agency. We're researching chemical control and biological control. So those are two scary things when you start, you know, introducing certainly insecticidal inoculation to trees and by control to eat the pest. So none of those things are actually approved in Canada yet. We've got research trials for one chemical that's being used on a trial basis. It's been successful. It's inoculated into the tree, so it's not a spray. And it's apparently in the United States, it's proven to be quite safe. But until we've done the research here in Canada, you know, nothing has been approved. So my concern is that there's not a lot of hemlock, maybe in this, the town of Bridgewater. I know some of the parks, there's a park over by the hospital that I think has a fair amount of hemlock, and I believe that's owned by the town. Is that town property? That would be one of my major concerns. There's a bit down along the riverbank as you go up towards Parkview, and I don't think there's very much around the Desprez Museum area. But it's going to arrive. And I think it's good to be aware of the fact that that's coming. I think as a town or as a municipality, you need to be relatively proactive, so be informed. Obviously, the citizens will have some concerns about some of the control and some of the treatment that we may be proposing or using from the toolbox that we have available. But... But there are ways to mitigate the spread. It's not going to stop it completely, but I think we can at least start looking at, maybe doing some civil culture work in some of these parks, diversifying a bit, so allowing, opening up the canopies, allowing regeneration of other species of trees to grow in there. Or planting other species of acadian forest species, such as the red spruce or sugar maple or yellow birch. That's a very quick overview, taking a 40-minute presentation, cut down to nine minutes. So, we've missed out on a lot, but I'm open to questions.
Deputy Mayor Tanner.
Colin, do you have a timeline on the inoculation approval process, like how long that might take?
I suspect it's going to come sooner than later. As I said, it's been a success in the United States. There's imidacloprid that's on the market, that's available now in Canada. It has to be applied by licensed applicators, so it's not like you can go to the hardware store and buy it anywhere you want. So, I think, you know, once it's been proven that that works safely, and that takes a lot of steps, of course, and it's important that we go slowly so that we know that it's not going to create any other problems. And I would say possibly within the next three to five years. And of course, this is moving, so it's, those trees are dying as we were waiting. And so, the intent is, if we can get approval to act on that and use some chemical control, it'll buy us some time to look at further into biocontrol methods, so. We do have a little time, for sure.
Other question, Council Grace.
Just a comment and a question, I guess, are there any natural predators?
I'm glad you asked that. Yeah, there are natural predators, but not in eastern North America. So, the west coast has a little, if I can back that up, I can probably show you. Yes, it's the bottom right-hand picture. It's fondly known as Little Larry, and it's a beetle, and it's called Larchobius negrinus. It's native to Canada, actually, the west coast of Canada, not the east coast. And it's a natural predator to the western hemlock. So, the western hemlock has HWA hemlock willio delget as well as eastern hemlock. But the advantage that the west has is that they've had this Larchobius negrinus for, you know, probably thousands of years, as long as the HWA has been there. So, it's a good balance, it's doing okay. The United States have been importing some of those insects into New York and into other New England states, and they're propagating these beetles, and they're doing quite well. Of course, when you introduce biocontrol to another area, you really don't know what to expect until, so that, again, that's going to require a great deal of research and time and thought before we get to that stage. So, it'll likely be 10 to 15 years before we see that, if we're reaching that at all.
And I guess the comment was, with all that dead wood, climate change, increasing temperatures throughout, that's a real fire hazard.
Exactly.
In a community like ours where it's mostly wooden structures.
That's true. Yeah, and I think that's why we're encouraging certain private landowners and, you know, town cities to, if they have parks, to think of ways that they can start working towards some sort of a proactive approach now, rather than waiting for those other controls that may or may not be approved, and the citizens of a particular area may not approve of it anyway. You know, how many people want chemical, you know, chemically treated trees in their backyard, so. That's why we also suggest that the civil culture method could be a good one, you could open up some of those areas. It allows the sunlight to come in, and so those healthy trees that remain, it buys them a little bit more time. And it also, you know, you have to look at the future, so that regeneration that's allowed to come up into that area will eventually, won't be in our lifetime, but eventually, there'll be another stand of, let's say, red spruce or another species.
Other questions from members of council? Maybe we can make sure that presentation gets to our community gardens coordinator as well. Something that people can take a look at. Council Thorburn first.
Just one, Andrew was talking about the biocontrol research, and I understood three to five years?
That's correct, and that's just an estimate, that's not. It could be earlier, it could be later.
Yeah, but at the rate it's traveling, how long do we have before it's in our forests, from where it's at now? Is it within three to five years?
Well, there's an estimate of roughly 15 kilometers per year. It's probably 30 kilometers from the county line, Lunenburg-Queen's County line. Well, and it's difficult to say, because we're watching this, and of course, climate has a great deal of influence on how that spreads. And this winter, we've had, surprisingly, we've had high mortality from some of the phenology work that's been done through the winter months. We've had a report that there's been a lot of death. Usually, they're adapting to the cold, but they don't like that fluctuation of temperature. So, if you have a cold snap, and then you get that January thaw, for example, there's mortality. So, we have that working possibly in our favor, but who knows for sure.
Okay, great, thank you.
Council Pizier.
Just a comment with regarding Dalhousie students, I believe maybe over a year ago, did assessment of inventory of our tree for the area, such as more residential area, but I'm just wondering if that could be a benefit source as to if there are any hemlocks in our residential area.
Certainly, we could provide that information to Mersey Tobeyattic.
Quite a detailed report that was given to council.
That's wonderful.
I didn't mention that.
Thanks, that's a great idea. We'll make sure that we can get a copy of that to you. If it helps, I guess.
One more thing before I finish, I've left a poster that CFIA has put out. It's a metal poster that allow you folks to decide, or your planning committee to decide, you know, what park that might serve a good purpose, so that people that are walking, I think it's really an outreach poster, so that people are aware that that's maybe not in the park, and it may alarm some people, because they may think it's in the park, but, yeah, so you can put that up. And I've left some cards there as well.
Thank you so much. Any other questions from council?
Good, thanks a lot.
Thank you for your presentation. Are there any other members of the public that wish to address council?
We're losing our audience.
Well, thank everyone for coming. Our next item is the minutes from the February 24th, 2020 regular council meeting. Any errors or omissions? Hearing none, we will declare the minutes approved and move down to reports and recommendations. You have appointment to the Bridgewater Act of Transportation Advisory Committee. What is council's wish? Deputy Mayor Tanner.
I move that Town Council for the town of Bridgewater appoint Ann Harding and Jay Gilmore to sit on the Bridgewater Act of Transportation Committee as resident representatives for three-year terms commencing immediately.
Thank you, seconded by Council Pizier, any discussion?
Question.
Question being called, all those in favor? Those opposed, motion is carried, and thank you to both of them for that. Next item there is the Lunenburg County Senior Safety Program February 2020 report. This is something that appears monthly on our agenda, and as always, I would strongly encourage people to read it. It is eye-opening, to see the need, and I'm amazed at the work that's being done. Any questions about that? No? Okay, our next item is use of provincial list of electors for 2020 municipal election. It is a municipal election year, time has flown by, so there's a motion in there that is required. What is someone prepared to make a motion, Councilor?
May I worship. I move that Town Council for the town of Bridgewater endorse the recommendation of the returning officer and enter into an information sharing agreement with the chief electrical officer of Nova Scotia for the provision of the provincial list of electors in accordance with Elections Act, SNS 2001 C dot 5 proclaim enforced January the 1st, 2012, and Municipal Elections Act for use of the 2020 municipal elections.
Seconded by Council Pizier, discussion?
Just a question for interest, the, that's 2016 list, was that, and was that list updated at that time?
In 2016, they update the list every time there's a provincial election, but they also have access to the federal one as well. So, if they, your tax returns, those things, that help them update the list, the province benefits from that.
So, it'd be a 2019 list.
And if your name is not on the list, you're going to get sworn in.
Yeah, so we do advertise and vote curve, those types of things, so people know that the list has been prepared, and they should check if they don't get notification, check and make sure that they are on the list.
Question, any other questions? No? All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried, thank you. Lead monitoring program 2020, lead service lateral loan program. And so, before we even go down this road, I want to make sure that the public is aware, we are talking not about the town infrastructure, but we're talking about the potential of lead pipes on people's private property. I just want to make that perfectly clear, so that people don't panic thinking that we've got all this lead piping around town. I know people will Google it, and they'll, Flint, Michigan will come up and things like that. So, do not panic, we are talking about what potentially could be older infrastructure on people's private property. So, Audrey, are you here to talk about that?
Yeah, I can. So, at the PSC meeting, for those who weren't present there, we had a discussion.
Can you just pull your microphone a little bit?
Sorry, so at the PSC meeting, we had an introduction to a new lead sampling program that rolls out for 2020. It's a Health Canada and provincial initiative. Basically, there's a couple of big targets that we're shooting to achieve, starting in the month of March, and goes right through till September. So, the objective is to look for lead within private properties, to make sure that there's no lead service laterals, or lead in your copper fittings, or anything of the sort. It's a proactive move to ensure that we present the best quality water possible to our residents, and it may be something in the internal piping from years ago. So, the houses that are most at risk of having this type is anything from the 1800s to about the 1960s. So, we put together a map of the town properties that are roughly in this age category, and we'll be proactively trying to test people's service water at these locations, and help them identify if it's actually in their lateral or in their copper fittings. And we will notify them, we'll go through the testing with them, and then the expectation is, at the end of that, if they wish to make, and we'll give them the literature to explain what the risks are of having lead in their property, and what the benefits of replacing it are. So, as a proactive move to try and help folks, that this may become a costly adventure for, we are trying to put in place a lateral loan program, similar to the PACE program, that would give them a way to pay it back over a five-year period, and, you know, it'll absorb some of the blow, and then they can ensure that they have the best piping possible. So, in the month of March, we anticipate sending out a bit of a media blitz in the water bills. People will get an information packet that will help educate them on what to look for. We'll also try and do some public notification on the town of Bridgewater website, possibly a radio ad or two. And if we have to, we'll start a door-to-door campaign, because we are mandated by the province to collect a minimum of 40 samples this year, and they expect us to make sure that we've done everything we can to identify lead areas in the town. And then, from the months of May to September, we'll ensure that we get these samples at the individual residences. We'll go to the house, we'll acquire the samples, and then we'll give the education to the residents if they have lead in their property. Any questions so far?
Council McDonald.
So, when this information goes out to the public, you've kind of identified at-risk homes. But if I get this information in the mail, and I'm concerned, you know, I've got a family that I'm concerned, do I have access to this program as well, or are you kind of maintaining?
Absolutely, anybody can contact us. In the pamphlet, we have an email address and a phone number to contact, so we'll give whatever education we need to whoever. It's not just the people in the target area, those are the folks that will get tested first, because they're the highest risk. But we would certainly keep anybody that's concerned on the list, and as we get through the higher-risk ones, we'll move our way down. This is a multi-year program, it just starts this year. We have to do 40 samples a year from here on out, until we are sure that there isn't lead present in the community, and hopefully, there isn't. We don't have any known cases, other than two properties from probably 10 to 15 years ago. So, we really don't know at this point if there's concern, or we'll be fine.
Council Grace.
Is there a cost for the test?
The test does have a cost, which the PSC has put in their budget for this year. There will be no cost to the homeowner for the test.
Yes.
And I would imagine 40 tests, there's been a lot of information about lead in newspapers recently. I would imagine you'd have no problem getting 40 people.
We hope not.
So, what happens if you get 400 or 500 in the first year?
Again, we'll prioritize to the highest-risk properties first, and then work our way through them. They'll stay on the list until we're able to get to them.
Council McDonald.
And this program will work just as easily for renters and apartments or rental properties as for a homeowner?
It will, the preference is to deal directly with the homeowner, but certainly, the rental folks can contact us, and we get in touch with the homeowner.
Other questions, Council Thorburn?
Do we have an estimate of how many homes we're talking? I know the area we're talking about, but is it 500 homes, is it 600 homes? We certainly must have some way of coming up with a number that could be possibly have it, out of the thousands of homes that we've gotten.
Yeah, right now, we don't have a very solid number, other than the, on the map that we attach to this document. We can definitely estimate the number of houses there, but that's no guarantee all of those, or any of them, would have lead currently. We've only had two properties so far.
My question was for, to find out how many properties may have it, not totally, so that's why that question was asked.
Yeah, currently, we didn't.
Currently, you don't know the number of homes in the area?
No.
Okay, great.
Council Grace.
How's the test done? Is it a matter of just taking tap water and letting it sit, and then, that's all it is?
The first wave of testing is, it's what they call a stagnation test. So, it basically has to sit for a minimum of six hours, and we take the first straw of water. So, that's how it's, I guess it's the greatest chance of leaching out of the pipe or the ladder.
Other questions? Alright, someone prepared to, do we make a motion?
Oh, no, I was just going to state that to, to accept the recommendation of the Public Service Commission, we'd be required to bring back a bylaw for your consideration. That would be similar to the PACE bylaw that we have. So, we'd look at caps that we'd want to put in place, because anything we loan affects our debt service ratio. So, you may, we'll come back with options for you to consider with that, but we would need a motion, given the direction to do that.
Okay, so I'm prepared to make that motion.
The Town Council for the town of Bridgewater endorsed the PSC's 2020 lead monitoring program and procedures, and assist the PSC in initiating the program by creating a lead service lateral loan bylaw for water laterals, interior plumbing, similar to the current PACE bylaw, to allow for a maximum loan of $10,000 for five years, with an interest rate set by the town.
Seconded by Council McDonald, further discussion?
Question.
Question being called, all those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. So, yeah, so this will come back with some.
With the draft bylaw, and some options in terms of caps you might want to consider for fiscal years.
And when the people get the information package in their water bill, they can always contact the PSC if they have questions. But again, this is, we're talking about the laterals and in-home piping. So, a lot of people would know, they might live in a home that's, like, my home is in that age category, but I know that we already did our lateral, when our, it broke, so we replaced it with plastic, and then we redid all the stuff in the house. So, if you know that, then you should be confident that you don't have that. But for those unknown, so that's kind of to your point, Council Thorburn, right? It's hard to know that number, because their house could be that proper age where they fit in that risk category, but if they've renovated, maybe they've redone their piping, so hopefully, we're gathering that too.
Yes.
So that we don't have to worry about these things. That's great, thank you. Next item is radio tower replacement. So, this came to the Public Service Commission that is recommending to the town of Bridgewater to discontinue discussions with East Link and just move forward with constructing a tower at a location that suits the PSC and the town requirements. So, not really worrying about what East Link's requirements are. They're a big company, they can worry about their own requirements for cellular coverage. What's council's wish?
Motion?
Yes, please.
Okay, I move that Town Council for the town of Bridgewater endorse the recommendation of the Public Service of the Public Service Commission of Bridgewater, and discontinue discussions with East Link, and move forward with constructing a tower at a location that suits both PSC and town requirements, for a maximum cost of two-hundred-and-eighty-five-thousand dollars.
Thank you. Seconded by, I think Counselor McDonald was first. Any discussion? It's pretty straightforward. All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you. Next item is nineteen, twenty nineteen, twenty twenty Grants Organization's Fourth and Final Intake Period. We have one item in there, and then we can deal with that, and then we can maybe, I don't know, start talking about what we want to do going forward.
Would you collect the motion?
I would love that, please.
I move the Town Council of Town of Bridgewater endorse the recommendation of the Grants Organization Committee, and award the following grant amount based on the applications received by the February first, February one, twenty twenty deadline. Kinship Performing Arts of one thousand dollars.
Seconded by Counselor McDonald. Discussion?
I don't feel comfortable supporting this. They asked for twenty-three thousand, they're getting a thousand. They're probably getting money through Pro Kids, which is the Town of Bridgewater. They're already getting money from the town.
Any further discussion?
The only, that, that did not come up on the front interesting.
So, we don't, we don't know that for sure?
I don't know that, no. They did ask for, I think, what, thirty thousand dollars?
Twenty-three.
Twenty-three?
Twenty-three.
So, what we're giving here is a thousand dollars, if that's counsel's wish. All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. I feel like we keep coming, so that's the fourth and final intake for this year. I feel like every year, going back a couple of decades, maybe, and things are better than they were years ago, but we always come around to, should we be handing out grants? Should we be, I mean, we're better we were, like I said, but should we be giving out operating grants? Should it be seed money? Should it be to groups that, you know, operate in different areas of the community, but not necessarily in town, or they have to be in town, they have to be out of town? I feel like we haven't had that full, open discussion yet, where we've gotten to where we are comfortable. Does that make sense?
It does.
I think we're all thinking something, but not saying it. Is that really kind of what I'm summing up here?
I, I personally am not a big fan of grants over the organizations. A lot of organizations, and we have taxpayers' money, corporate in particular. A lot of those corporations give to these organizations. So, in fact, they're giving twice through our tax dollars and through giving money directly from their business. So, I struggle with that a little bit.
Thoughts from, from Counselor Thorburn?
I, I, I think in the last eight years, we've come a long way from when we first started down this road, and we've kind of separated over time, some of the ones that was operating grants, that needed that every year to operate, like maybe Senior Wheels, or the Bridgewater Fireman's Band. They come to grants, and we give it to them, so we put it in the budget line items, and it kind of went away. And I'm kind of with Counselor McGinnis that it should be maybe used a little bit differently. This here may probably be one-time ask, and that's what that grant money's for, not continually, year after year after year, for operating.
And it's not to diminish the value of these organizations or groups. These are incredibly valuable, but what I struggle with, and we've seen it time after time, is that we tend to be the first ask, sometimes we're the only ask, and we should never be the first money out. We should be your last resort, to Counselor McGinnis's point. You should have gone to all the businesses and corporations in town, asking for sponsorship, before we turn over what is essentially their money, after they've turned you down. And I know, I mean, Counselor Graves, you've raised this, this valid point time and time again. We have a large event, that when we get five, six, ten thousand dollar asks, but there's no corporate sponsorship. Is it appropriate? So, I'd like to get us to a point where we're having a more formal discussion, and this is, if, this is the route we want to take, where we just want to keep doing the intakes, four intakes a year. As we've said a few times, it's a lot better than it was ten years ago. The changes made by the previous council really, really helped, but does it need to be refined again? And I think we talked about this last time, where we're not talking about, like, festivals and events, right? Those, those generally come to a council meeting and explain, like we had the Dory, the Dory Association. Afterglow comes to council and makes their, their pitch, and there's nothing preventing us from hearing from those groups. Social Exhibition, you know, when they want street closures and in-kind, and it's usually in-kind, but I feel like council after council after council, for decades, has wanted to say something, and not been able to either do it in a way that transitions us properly, or maybe even not sure yet how to, to get us there. But I think we're close. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
So, you look like you want to say something?
Well, I'm just wondering if it's something you want to refer to a discussion session, because you did have a conversation about grants and Pro Kids, and at our, at our last discussion session, and kind of looking at, maybe focusing a little bit more there than other areas for our grants.
I think we did talk about last, at the discussion session, that going down this road perhaps meant a year of transition, that there, if that was the way to go, that council would say twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one would be the last year of these four intakes, as we, you know, to be fair to people, but we haven't had that full discussion. So, if we can add that to a discussion session, bring that back to council. Seven of us can have discussions with constituents and groups that we normally are talking to while we're out in the public, to, to get their feedback. I think especially the, the business taxpayers. Because I'd like to know if there's barriers for, what, if they're not sponsoring events, why? Is it because they don't see the reciprocated value, they're not putting people in the seats of their restaurant or their business, and so they don't see that? I'm curious to know. Does that sound good?
Yeah.
Okay. Great. So, that'll come back to a discussion session, I intend, soon. Next item is RFP twenty nineteen dash thirteen, Engineering Services Development of Town of Bridgewater Inflow and Infiltration Plan. Infiltration Plan, just sounds like a whole bunch of people are going to come into Bridgewater. Sounds like a good thing. So, this is, it's not a fun topic, but it's the necessary topic. All right. Take us through it.
Okay. So, we issued the RFPs directive in pre-approval for the inflow infiltration study. We did get three proposals back. They were all local companies. We had tried to reach out to additional companies and did advertise a little further abroad, just to try and see if we could attract some other groups. We did get some interest from groups out of Quebec and Ontario, which are kind of suppliers to some of the larger projects that we had sort of seen in the initial, I guess, surfing of the internet. So, I think they'll come in through these consultants in different ways, but it is local consultants. The three proposals did come in within the budget. We had originally set a hundred thousand for this work. It is our expectation, this project will capture a couple of large things, such as a complete wastewater model, to include our combined system. We will see a large degree of flow monitoring to validate that model. We have asked them to look at pretty much every initiative, from very small household through to the larger systems, and give us a really broad understanding, if we want to be doing practical innovative solutions, what range of, of solutions it will take to get us to a zero overflow state, and then also the budget to go with it. The thing that should be of great interest to us all is, we have asked for a presentation to a larger group, such as council and staff, to look at the initial proposals when they come forward, so that everybody gets a good look at the big range of suites, and then we'll narrow that down to what we're actually going to move forward with. So, I, I think we have tried to capture what, what we have been directed to do. The overall winner of the presentation is design points. The technical end of things were very close for all three bidders, and then the costs differentiated the overall winner. But design point came through as, as that choice. They have done the last major infrastructure study that we had to review all our pumping stations, and have a very good understanding of the system. They have done work with an earlier version of our model, so I, I think we will see a good continuation of the product from, from the first study with this group.
Questions from council? I mean, this is, this is big. So, for the public, this is, this is our, our path to reducing and eliminating the overflows into the river. This is our path forward to continued growth in our town. It's great that we're growing, and we've been growing and growing and growing, but of course, that stretches our infrastructure, with many of our sections of town, you know, at or overcapacity, when you look at the overflows, but also old, very, very old. So, this will give us kind of a map of the whole town, with, I love that you're coming back with, bringing, as you said, the whole suite of options, before that gets narrowed down, because there are times where I feel like council gets the final, this is what we've recommended. Sometimes, out of fear that if the project is a little too big, it would just simply be rejected due to cost, even though that larger product could, in the long run, be the better value for the, for the taxpayers. So, I, I like that we're, we're going to get a look at that before that gets knocked down. So, thank you for that. You have a question?
Audrey, just a clarification, I guess. To me, this doesn't seem like a plan. It seems like, here's, here's the issues that you're going to face going forward, and here's sort of some options of solutions. Are we, are we then going to have to have another, I don't know, study to figure out the plan forward? Do you know what I mean?
We're hoping not.
Okay.
What we expect to see out of this, the first workshop that we have with this larger group, we will have a lot of options on the table, or we hope we do. And then, we will whittle down to the ones that we think will give us the best economic value, plus implementable, because it has to be something we can actually put in place. And then, we will see the next steps. That is the expectation coming out of this. We will have a nice list of the highest priority to the lowest, with a cost associated.
Okay.
And, and at a level that we could bring it, there'll probably be some additional design, depending on how complicated the solution is, but it, it will be to a level another consultant could finish, like, the design for that particular chapter. But we, we will have a plan refined coming out of this.
So, actionable plan, if you're in mind. Okay. It's a great question. Other questions? Someone prepared to make a motion? Please. Counselor Thorburn?
Okay. I move that Town Council, Town of Bridgewater, award RFP two thousand nineteen dash thirteen, Engineering Service Department of the Town of Bridgewater, Inflow and Infiltration Plan to Design Point Engineering and Serve Any Limited, for an estimated cost of a hundred and six thousand, six hundred and five dollars, including HST, and ninety-six thousand, six seventy-three twelve, net HST.
Thank you. Seconded by Counselor McGinnis. Questions?
Question.
Questions being called. All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you. It wouldn't be a council meeting without a notice. So, we have a notice here for our change in our Pro Kids policy, which will come to the March twenty-third council meeting, after some discussion. This will better align it with other, other programs in the county, and actually maximize the opportunities for kids to, to be involved in, in recreation and arts and culture activities. So, someone prepared to make that motion to give notice? Counselor Graves?
I move that Town Council for the Town of Bridgewater give notice pursuant to Section forty-eight of Municipal Government Act, that at the March twenty-third, twenty twenty council meeting, a policy will be considered to maximize the opportunities for youth in Bridgewater to engage in physical or cultural activities.
Thank you. Seconded by Counselor McGinnis. Discussion?
And I might add, I like this system of giving notice.
I love it. Well, I also like the idea of cleaning up these policies and making them twenty twenty, not nineteen eighty. So, yeah, no, I like it, too. Any discussion?
Question.
Questions being called. All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you. Next item is the Lunenburg County Multipurpose Corporation Center, the LCLST budget, and the municipal contribution. Do you want to walk us through that one, please?
Yeah, sure. So, you have before you, two motions that were passed by the Lunenburg County Multipurpose Center Corporation Board, with respects to the twenty twenty, twenty-one operating and capital budget, and that is that the councils approve a capital budget in the amount of eight hundred and twenty-five thousand, with each council's contribution being four hundred and twelve thousand, five hundred, less any surplus carryover, and any other external funding secured. So, I'll explain the carryover in a minute. And then you have that you approve the operating budget at seven hundred and sixty-eight thousand, eight hundred and twenty-three, with each council's respective contribution being three hundred and eighty-four thousand, four hundred and eleven fifty, which is less than last year's contribution.
Going in the right direction.
Mm-hmm. So, to carry out the, the motions, we're required to also consider each council a motion that would enable us to use the unspent capital funds from last year, to offset one, an operating deficit for twenty nineteen, twenty, which we knew we would have, because we brought in a transition coordinator and had some unplanned expenses, and also use the remainder to be brought into twenty twenty, twenty-one, to offset some of the capital cost. So, you'll see the projection is to have, projection is a hundred and twenty-one thousand, nine hundred and ninety-seven. Now, that's a forecast based on the end of December, so it can vary a little bit. But what is proposed is that approximately forty-six thousand, two hundred and thirty-eight, which would represent the forecasted deficit for, for nineteen twenty, that that be used to bring, balance the budget, and then the remainder, which I believe is around seventy-five, be brought in to, to offset some of the capital costs next year. The operating budget itself is presented to you, and it shows you current year forecast, as well as what's proposed for next year. The significant changes, last year, we had the professional fees, so we had a new stadia of fees in there, so you'll see that that's down this year. We still have some proposed in the budget, as we implement some of the capital projects. We're proposing that we continue with the service for a little transition period, and wages are down, which we anticipated with some organizational changes that were done as well. So, those are some of the, the reasons why the budget is slightly down from last year. And in your capital, you see that the main project there is some systems, I guess mechanical system upgrades that are being proposed. So, we had an assessment done by an external consultant, a TRAC, who looked at our systems and identified that there were some improvements that could be done, that would significantly reduce our power consumption, and make the, the systems more efficient in their operation. So, the executive summary was included with your agenda, I believe. Yeah. And then, basically, without getting all the technical pieces of it, indicated that it would be a two, you're looking at almost an eight hundred thousand dollar project, and it'd be a two-point-nine year payback.
Yeah, amazing.
So, it's a significant reduction in your, in your power consumption, which is kind of where we thought we were going to be at the beginning. And one of the things the board is looking at, and has given direction, is that we have another party review the TRAC report, just to ensure that the assumptions and all that, that we're not going to find ourselves in the same spot as we were initially, where we thought we had an efficient system, and there were some, some issues with it. So, that's, that, that's the big piece of your capital budget, is that. But as I said, a little bit of pain this year, but significant payback over, after two-point-nine years, then those savings will be realized.
Retail.
And then, the, the rest of it is looking at some Wi-Fi upgrades, and some, I believe it is, inflatables that would help in programming in the aquatic center.
Any questions with that, Counselor Thorburn?
Just one, Tammy, I, I probably shouldn't ask this question, but I know what we're paying this year is proposed to twenty twenty-one, but nineteen, twenty, what would, do you have a number for a combined capital operating that we paid last year? I know you said we're saving some.
Uh, we are. In the operating, our, our contribution was, it, well, it's forecasted to be a total of eight hundred and forty thousand, so that would be four-twenty a piece.
Yeah. So, that, that's a savings of over forty thousand dollars combined, which is awesome.
Yeah.
But the capital's more this year, because it's a big, it's a big project.
But even the- But even to cut that down by that much, the way things are increasing is just awesome. Good team.
Yeah.
Yep, thank you.
Well, hopefully future savings will be more substantial.
Even more, you know, over time.
Yeah, because we still have some professional fees in this year's budget. And that's around forty-nine thousand, I believe, and that'll, that should disappear for next year.
Other discussion? Someone prepared to make a motion?
Come on, Bill.
Councilwoman Frasier.
That Town Council for the Town of Bridgewater approved the proposed twenty twenty, twenty-one LCLC capital budget of eight hundred and twenty-five thousand. Town's contribution being four hundred and twelve thousand, five hundred, less any approved surplus carryover of unspent capital funds from the twenty nineteen, twenty and, and, and less any external funding secured.
Thank you. Seconded by Deputy Mayor Tanner. Discussion?
Question.
All those in favor? Those opposed, motion is carried. Someone prepared to read the next motion?
Yeah. That Town Council for the Town of Bridgewater approved the proposed twenty twenty, twenty-one LCLC operating budget of seven hundred and sixty-eight thousand, eight hundred and twenty-three dollars. Town's contribution, three hundred and eighty-four thousand, four hundred and eleven dollars and fifty cents.
Thank you. Seconded by Councilwoman McGinnis there. Any discussion on that?
Question.
Questions being called. All those in favor? Those opposed, motion is carried. And the final motion, did you want to?
Okay, yeah. The Town Council for the Town of Bridgewater direct the, that the LCMPCC unspent capital funds from the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty, estimated to be a hundred and twenty-one thousand, nine hundred and ninety-seven dollars, be used to offset the twenty nineteen, twenty operating deficit forecasted to be forty-six thousand, two hundred and thirty-eight dollars, with the remainder to be carried over as revenue in the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one capital budget to reduce the partners' contribution to the LCMPCC capital budget.
Thank you. Seconded by Councilwoman Thorburn. Any discussion there?
Questions?
Questions being called. All those in favor? Those opposed, motion is carried. Things are starting to look up for the LCLC. A few years of changes and I will say, the last couple of years working with our municipal partners in this project, we've, we've really been able to align ourselves a little bit better and, and move things forward. So that's been very helpful and so I appreciate their contribution in this. Next item is another notice, amendment by policy to land use and subdivision bylaws to align with policy eighty-nine fees. So this is again, something that will be discussed at the next council meeting. Someone prepared to make a motion? Deputy Mayor Tanner?
I move that Town Council for the Town of Bridgewater give notice pursuant to section forty-eight and two-eleven of the Municipal Government Act that as of March twenty-third, twenty twenty, council meeting, a policy will be considered to amend the land use and subdivision bylaw to correctly identify policy eighty-nine fees.
Thank you. Seconded by Councilwoman Frasier. Any discussion?
Question.
Questions being called. All those in favor? Those opposed, motion is carried. Our final item, another notice, amendments to policy eighty-nine. I feel like we should have put that one first, fees. Someone prepared to make a motion? Councilwoman Thorburn, please?
I move that Town Council for the Town of Bridgewater give notice pursuant to section forty-eight of Municipal Government Act that at the March twenty-third, twenty twenty council meeting, amendments to policy eighty-nine, fees will be considered to update and approve various fees.
Thank you. Seconded by Deputy Mayor Tanner. Discussion? All those in favor? Those opposed, motion is carried. That was our last item. We have an in-camera meeting in the next room to deal with contract negotiations. Kind of a motion to adjourn. Thorburn, seconded by Councilwoman Frasier. We are adjourned.